Hello everyone. Reneg pa ako? Am I audible? Okay type naman yes if reneg ako. Alright, so hello. Good afternoon everyone. This is the first day of our study session and I hope you are all doing well. And how was the geometry class? Magaling ba magturo si lecturer Kurt? And for the next... Lesson naman ah... Ah, for the next subject naman, we're going to discuss astronomy. So last week, we had an orientation and nagpakalala or nag-introduce 'yung mga lecturer. And I'm sorry if hindi ako masyadong... Um, di ako masyadong nakapag-introduce na maayos kasi paus ako noon. So, let me introduce myself again. I am lecturer Cinni. Ang Discord tag ko is C-I-N-N and four Y's #8147. So if you have any question, you can DM me naman sa Discord. So, uh, my full name is Francine Elperalta. I'm seventeen years old. So isang taon na lang pwede na akong magsabi ng minor moments. So I'm grade twelve and STEM students. And katulad niyo, isa po akong incoming college student. And ang plano ko pong kunin na course is BS Applied Math. So I love reading poems. I love writing poems. I'm a writer and mahilig din ako magbasa ng mga stories, books. And I'm also a volleyball player and a K-pop fan. So if you are a fan of volleyball and K-pop, magkakasundo tayo. And ang ituturo ko sa inyo ay obviously astronomy and calculus. 'Yung calculus, uh, next Friday pa po 'yun. So now, let's have an introduction. Let's define what is astronomy. So astronomy is the branch of science which deals with celestial objects, space, and the physical universe as a whole. So, hm, 'yung astronomy, pinag-aaralan dito 'yung ah... 'yung... Sa astronomy, pinag-aaralan dito kung ano ba 'yung... kung everything outside the Earth's atmosphere. So 'yung mga planets, stars, comets, asteroids, meteors, everything outside the Earth's atmosphere. So let's proceed agad sa lesson one. Theory is about the origin of the universe and the solar system. Universe, let's define universe. Universe is all of space and time and their contents, including planets, stars, galaxies, and all other forms of matter and energy. Universe is already thirteen point eight billion years old. So imagine, ganun na pala katagal 'yung universe ngayon. And they said that it just started from a single point. So imagine, 'yung universe ngayon is at infinite size. Napahalawak na universe ngayon. Pero dati, they said na 'yung universe nag-start lang siya sa single point. That's amazing, right? Let's now proceed to Big Bang Theory. So Big Bang Theory, this is how astronomers explains the way the universe began. So eto theory na'to, 'yung mga astronomers naniniwala sila dito sa theory na'to. And it describes how the universe expanded from an initial state of high density and temperature. So eto, many students or many people misunderstood the Big Bang Theory. So akala nila 'yung Big Bang Theory, there's an explosion or merong pagsabog na nangyari dito sa theory na'to, which is not. Kasi ang Big Bang Theory ay 'yung universe nag-iexpand lang siya or nag-istretch lang. Pero 'yung universe, hindi siya sumabog. Hindi, ah, walang kinalaman 'yung ah... 'yung name niya dito na "bang". Kasi akala nila Big Bang. Akala nila merong pagsabog pero wala talaga. Ang nangyari sa Big Bang Theory, nag-iexpand lang 'yung universe and nag-istretch lang siya. So it is still believed that the universe is still expanding and stretching as time goes by. So 'yung universe daw, hanggang ngayon, nag-iexpand pa rin siya and nag-istretch. So imagine, ang laki-laki na nun ng universe natin ngayon, ang laki-laki na ng universe natin ngayon and there's an infinite size na hindi na natin mamassure kung gaano ba kalaki 'yung universe. Pero nag-iexpand and nag-istretch pa rin siya. So George Lemaître. So si George Lemaître, he was a Belgian priest who said that the universe started as just a single point. So siya 'yung nagsabi na 'yung universe daw ay nag-start sa single point lang. Parang as in point lang talaga. And he said that the universe keeps stretching on... Keeps on stretching and expanding. Magtake notes kayo kasi may quiz tayo later. So next is Edwin Hubble. Si Edwin Hubble, ah, naniniwala siya kay George na 'yung universe ay nag-iexpand. He observed that the universe is continuously expanding. He discovered that a galaxy's velocity is proportional to its distance. Galaxies that are twice as far from us move twice as fast. So 'yung galaxy, ano, kung twice as far as from us, mas mabilis siya gumalaw. So naniniwala siya na 'yung universe nag-iexpand kasi nakita niya 'yung mga galaxies ay... They are moving away from each other. Ah, sorry masyado wag mo mules. Gusto niyo bang ulitin ko? So okay, ilitin natin mula dito. Si George Lemaître. So si George Lemaître daw, siya 'yung ah, Belgian priest na sinabi niya na 'yung universe daw ay nag-start sa single point. So nagsimula lang daw 'yung universe from single point. Then 'yung ah... He said that the universe keeps on stretching and expanding. Siya 'yung nag-propose ng Big Bang Theory. Siya 'yung ah... Siya 'yung nagbigay ng idea about the Big Bang Theory. Next, ulit, si Edwin Hubble. He made the observation he obs... observation that the universe is continuously expanding. So na-observed daw niya 'yung mga galaxies, they are moving away from each other. Then nakita niya 'yung mga galaxy, kung gaano sila kaalayo sa atin, ganun din sila kabilis ah... Ganun din sila kabilis ah... mag-move or gumalaw. Next, so what really happened in Big Bang Theory? It just start... So di ba sabi natin, it just started at a single point. So 'yung single point na 'yun, nag-expand siya and now the universe is composed of hot tiny particles mixed with light and energy. So 'yung universe daw, nung nag-expand siya, nag-compose siya ng hot tiny particles, then merong light and energy. So hindi natin alam kung gaano ba ka... Ka-hot 'yung ano... Gaano ba kainit 'yung universe dati? Kasi syempre hindi pa naman tayo buhay noon. So with light and energy, 'yung universe down habang nag-iexpand, mas lalo siyang lumalamig. So habang nag-iexpand 'yung universe, lumalamig din... lumalamig siya ng lumalamig. Pero 'yung lamig na 'yun, hindi natin... Hindi natin... Di natin... Di siya 'yung lamig na in-expect natin na as in malamig talaga. Ang in-expect dito, 'yung it cools down, lumalamig lang siya, pero 'yung lamig niya parang ano, hindi pa rin siya pwedeng mati... Di siya matetake ng body natin. So particles slow down and group together forming light elements. So 'yung particles daw, syempre lumalamig 'yung universe, then 'yung mga particles ah, bumabagal siya. Then they group together, tapos nagform siya ng light elements, which is the hydrogen and helium. Next, nung meron na tayong hydrogen and helium, garon na tayo ng atoms and they group together forming stars. And we all know that the stars is composed of hydrogen and helium. With the presence of gravity, galaxies were formed. Next, the cosmic microwave background. This is the leftover radiation from the Big Bang or the time when the universe began. So itong cosmic microwave background, ito 'yung isa sa mga proweba na nangyari 'yung Big Bang Theory. Eto 'yung mga leftover or 'yung mga tira-tirang radiation and energy habang nag-iexpand 'yung universe. So ito 'yung itsura niya. 'Yung mga... Alam niyo ba 'yung jet? 'Yung jet, kapag nasa ah... nasa sky siya, may usok na lumalabas dun sa jet. Then pag umalis na 'yung jet, may usok na natira or may... Merong natirang usok dun sa atmosphere na nakikita pa din natin. So parang ganun 'yung cosmic microwave background. Parang natirang energy, 'yung natirang energy nung... Nung habang nag-iexpand 'yung universe. So ito 'yung isa sa mga proweba na nangyari 'yung Big Bang Theory. Alright. Before we start sa next theory, naintindihan ba 'yung Big Bang Theory? If yes, pakitype naman "Big Bang" sa live chat. Pakitype sa live chat kung naintindihan 'yung Big Bang Theory. Big Bang. Yes, Big Bang. Alright. Let's move on naman sa oscillating theory. It was introduced by the Irish-born physicist William McPhee in 1951. A cosmological model that combines both the Big Bang and the Big Crunch as part of the cyclical event. So ito namang oscillating theory, ah, nag-aagree siya sa Big Bang Theory. Naniniwala din siya sa Big Bang Theory. Ang pinagkaiba nilang dalawa, merong contraction or 'yung parang pagliit ng universe. Kung sa Big Bang, ang universe daw ay nag-iexpand. Sa oscillating naman, nag-iexpand siya. May period na nag-iexpand siya. May period naman na lumiliit siya or nagko-contract. So yes, period of expansion and contraction. Naintindihan ba 'yung oscillating theory? Alright, next. The steady-state theory. So in this steady-state theory, everything is the same. 'Yung steady-state theory daw, naniniwala siya na ah... 'yung universe sa umpisa pa lang, nandyan na siya. This steady-state theory, walang nag-iba. Sa umpisa pa lang, nandyan na agad 'yung universe. So, so naniniwala ba kayo doon na ah... 'yung universe nandyan na agad sa umpisa pa lang, walang nangyaring expansion or contraction? So steady-state nga talaga, na everything is the same. Walang nangyaring ah, expansion or contraction. So galaxies are not moving away from each other. So sabi ni ah, Edwin Hubble na 'yung ano daw, 'yung di ba ang sabi niya, na observed daw niya na ang... Ang galaxies daw, nakita niya na ah... They are moving away from each other. Pero dito sa steady-state theory, galaxies are not moving away daw. Hindi daw sila gumagalaw. So there's no expansion and no contraction. Galaxies will absorb energy given off by the stars throughout their life cycle. So dito sa steady-state theory, sabi daw, 'yung galaxies daw, ah, kumukuha sila ng energy mula dun sa stars na malapit ng mamatay. Ah, it is part of stars' life cycle. So pag namatay 'yung mga stars, kinukuha ng mga galaxies 'yung energy nila. Next is energy is reused to produce from stars. It was proposed in 1948 by British scientists Sir Herman Bondi, Thomas Goddard, and Sir Fred Holmes. So tatlo silang scientists na nag-propose nitong steady-state theory. So this was rejected because they failed to explain cosmic microwave background. So na-rejectong theory na'to kasi nga... Um, na-reject 'yung theory na'to kasi nga, hindi nila na-explain itong cosmic microwave background na nag-proprove na totoo 'yung Big Bang Theory. Syempre ah... Syempre hindi gumagalaw 'yung universe dito sa steady-state theory. Pero merong proof na... Na leftover radiation dun habang guma... Ah, habang... Habang nag-iexpand 'yung universe. So hindi nila na-explain itong cosmic microwave background. Kaya na-reject itong theory na'to. Alright. Let's move on naman sa solar system. Naintindihan niyo ba 'yung ah, tatlong theory? Tatlong theory kung paano nagsimula 'yung... Ah, okay. Ano po, 'yung Big Crunch doon sa oscillating. So itong Big Crunch, ibig sabihin ng Big Crunch, ano, parang 'yun nga, nagcontract. Lumit 'yung ano, lumit 'yung ah, universe. May period na lumit 'yung universe, kaya tinawag siya ang Big Crunch. Pag Big Bang, expansion. Pag Big Crunch, contraction. So naintindihan ba tong tatlong theory? Etong Big Bang, yes, Big Bang Theory, then oscillating saka steady-state theory. Type "yes" if naintindihan niyo. Let's move on na sa solar system. Let's move on na sa solar system. So does anyone know what is... What are the eight planets of solar system? Ano 'yung mga eight planets ng solar system? Yes, magkaiba 'yung ah... Magkaiba 'yung Big Bang sa Big Crunch. Sa oscillating theory, ano sila? Parang pinagsama. Yes, the eight planets are Mercury, Venus, Earth, Mars, Jupiter, Saturn, and Saturn, Uranus, and Neptune. Okay. Nice. Let's proceed na sa solar system. Let's define solar system. Solar system is the gravitational bound system of the Sun and the object that orbit it. It formed 4.6 billion years ago. So kung ang universe nag... Ah, nabuo siya nung thirteen point eight billion years, eto namang solar system nabuo siya nung 4.6 billion years ago. So... So it takes nine point... Nine point two billion years bago mabuo 'yung solar system. So ganun katagal 'yung process niya. Our solar system consists of our star, the Sun, and everything bound to it by gravity. So 'yung mga sinabi niyo na na planets, Mercury, Venus, Earth, Mars, Jupiter, Saturn, Uranus, and Neptune. Yes. It also consists of our planets such as Pluto, dozens of moons, we have a lot of moons, and millions of asteroids, comets, and meteorites. Okay, let's proceed na sa hypothesis kung paano ba nabuo 'yung solar system. Una is the encounter hypothesis. It was proposed by George Leclerc and Comte de de Vonne. A rogue star passed by the Sun, gas, and matter were removed from both stars and become planets. So dito naman sa encounter hypothesis, as you can see dito, meron tayong Sun, then rogue star. Rogue star. Ibisabihin ng rogue star, it is a roaming star. 'Yung star na nagtratral, 'yung nagmumove. And malikot tong star na'to, ang magulo, it is called rogue star. So 'yung Sun daw, 'yung Sun daw natin, then 'yung rogue star, nagbaggaan sila. Because of the gravitational pull, nagbaggaan sila. Then 'yung mga matters and gas na natanggal sa kanila, they become planets. Naging planet sila. 'Yung mga natanggal na ah... The matters and gas doon nung nagkulay 'yung dalawang... 'yung dalawang star which is the Sun and the rogue star. Next. The nebular hypothesis. It was proposed in 1957 by the German philosopher Immanuel Kant and modified in 1796 by Pierre Leclerc. So gas and dust contract due to gravity forming a disk that begun to rotate forming within its center the protosun. Within the disk form the planets. So as you can see here, dito sa picture, ting kayo. Meron tayong gas and dust. And because of the gravity, nag-rotate 'yung dust and... Dust and gas, then nagform siya na disk, na plate like this. Etong disk na'to, nagform siya, then nag-rotate. Then habang bumibilis ang bumibilis 'yung rotation, nag... ah, habang bumibilis ang bumibilis 'yung rotation, 'yung matter or 'yung matter naipon siya sa gitna. Then tumaas 'yung temperature. Then tumaas 'yung temperature, then doon nabuo 'yung Sun. Which is what we call protosun. Next, nung ah... Nung nabuo na 'yung Sun, 'yung mga natirang matter sa paligid niya, naging planet 'yun. So eto na 'yung doon nabuo 'yung solar system. Naintindihan ba 'yung nebular hypothesis? Next, the protoplanet hypothesis. This was the um... This was the improved version of nebular. Eto 'yung improved version ng nebular hypothesis. Etong protoplanet hypothesis. This is the latest ah... Latest hypothesis na pinaniniwalaan ng mga astronomers. Eto 'yung pinakaligtas. This was proposed by... This was proposed by an English astronomer and mathematician William Hunter McPhee. So dito, parang pareho lang siya sa nebular pero mas specific 'yung ah, process niya. So massive clouds of gas and dust rotated slowly in phase. So meron ulit tayong gas and dust dito. Then nag-rotate siya slowly sa space. The cloud shrunk under the pull of its... The cloud shrunk under the pull of its gravity. So nag-shrunk daw 'yung, 'yung mga, 'yung clouds, which is the gas and dust, nag-shrunk siya because of gravity. So 'yung most materials gathered its own, its own center. So naggather daw 'yung mga materials or 'yung matter, then 'yung temperature ulit, tumaas. So temperature becomes so high that yield a powerful reaction called fusion of hydrogen. So nag-tumaas daw 'yung temperature niya. This is called fusion of hydrogen, giving birth to the sun. So di ba naipon 'yung ah, 'yung mga, 'yung matter sa gitna, then tumaas ulit 'yung temperature, then, then dito nabuo 'yung Sun. The remaining materials around it form plate like this called eddy. So 'yung mga materials na naiwan, bumuo siya ng ah plate, this, parang ano, this. Then this is called eddy. That shrunk into compact masses called protoplanets, later formed planets and satellites. So nagform siya na, so 'yung mga natira, nagform siya ng planets and satellites. Alright. So this will end the lesson for today. Mabilis lang siya, gusto niyo bang ulitin ko? Ah, this is the quote for today. Failure is success in progress. This is by Albert Einstein. Gusto niyo bang ulitin ko 'yung lesson? Mabilis lang talaga 'yung lesson. Do you have questions ba? Medyo late kasi, medyo delay kasi 'yung ah, 'yung streaming. Do you have any questions about the topic or the lesson for today? Yes, mabilis lang siya. Meron ba kayong mga questions? Sure ba kayo ah, kasi make quiz tayo. If masyado kayong nabilisan, pwede naman kayong ah magtanong kung ano ba 'yung, kung ano 'yung part na hindi niyo naintindihan. Okay, 'yung last part po, 'yung about the formation ng solar system. Okay, eto? What, 'yung protoplanet ba? Hindi po ba 'yung sa steady-state, nag-eexpand po siya, pero constant po 'yung pagpawa ng heavenly bodies instead of the planet? Yes, yes, yes. Hindi siya nag-eexpand 'yung steady-state theory, parang ano, yun nga, hindi siya nag-eexpand 'yung steady-state theory. Okay. 'Yung last part, eto ba 'yung sinasabi mo, um, 'yung last part ng hypothesis, 'yung protoplanet? Pwede po, quick rundown lang. Okay. Quick rundown, okay, eto 'yung parang pinagsamay. Ito sa theories naman, sa universe, we have three theories sa universe, kung paano ba sila nagsimula. First is the Big Bang Theory. So sa Big Bang Theory, sinasabi na 'yung universe daw ay nag-eexpand, nag-i-stretch daw siya. Then, itong cosmic microwave background, eto 'yung proof na 'yung ah, 'yung Big Bang ay nangyari. So ito 'yung proof na, na, eto 'yung leftover radiation or 'yung, eto 'yung natirang mga energy mula sa Big Bang. So ito 'yung, parang ito 'yung pinaka-proweba kung na-nangyari 'yung Big Bang Theory. Next is the oscillating theory. Dito sa oscillating theory, para siyang Big Bang, Big Bang, pero meron contraction na nangyari. May contraction or Big Crunch 'yung pinatawag nila. So merong expansion, meron ding contraction or paglait dito sa oscillating theory. Dito naman sa steady-state theory, well, ah, sa umpisa pa lang, nandyan na agad 'yung universe. So walang, ah, walang expansion or, um, walang contraction na nangyari. Then 'yung mga galaxies, kumukuha sila ng energy sa stars na malapit ng mamatay. Tapos 'yung mga energy na re-reuse siya or nagagamit ulit para magform ng new stars. Then itong steady-state theory, ah, na-reject siya kasi nga hindi niya na-explain kung bakit, kung bakit meron tayong cosmic microwave background. So eto 'yung tatlo sa, um, sa universe. Dito naman sa solar system, we have three theories then. We have a lot of theories naman sa solar system, pero bibigyan, binigyan ko lang kayo ng tatlo. So sa, sa, um, solar system, we have encounter hypothesis. Dito sa encounter hypothesis, 'yung rogue star saka 'yung Sun, 'yung Sun natin, ah, nag-ano sila, um, nag-banggaan silang dalawa. So, 'yung mga particles or 'yung mga, 'yung matters na, na natanggal sa kanila, they become, they become planets. So 'yung rogue star, they ah, ano siya eh, um, nagtatrabal siya na star, they are roaming stars. So hin, so umalis 'yung ah, 'yung rogue star, dinatira 'yung Sun, yun, 'yung mga natirang, ah, 'yung mga natirang, natirang matter, naging planet sila. Next naman, 'yung nebular hypothesis. Itong nebular hypothesis, meron tayong gas and dust, tapos nagcontract sila because of gravity. Then nag-rotate sila, nag-rotate sila, nagform sila ng disk, tapos 'yung matter, 'yung matter naipon sa gitna. Then uminit 'yung temperature, then doon nabuo 'yung Sun. Then 'yung mga natirang matter sa paligid nun is naging planet. Ayun, nebular hypothesis. Next naman, dito sa protoplanet, para siyang nebular hypothesis, pero ah, parang mas specific 'yung process niya. Then, um, mas improved siya. Then eto 'yung pinakalatest na, na-hypothesis na pinapaniwalaan ng mga scientists, ah, ng mga astronomers. So 'yung protoplanet hypothesis, meron ulit tayong ah, gas and dust, then nag-rotate siya because of gravity. Slowly, ah, slowly rotated in space. Then 'yung mga matter, 'yung mga matter naipon din sa gitna, then tumaas 'yung temperature. This is called fusion of hydrogen, 'yung pagtaas 'yung temperature, then dito nabuo 'yung Sun. Then 'yung mga natira ulit na, um, materials, naging ano sila, um, naging planets and satellites. So yon. Gets ba 'yung ah, 'yung mga theories? Ah, 'yung quiz after nitong ano, session? Yes, 'yung Big Bang, 'yung parang pinaka-pinaniniwalaan ng mga astronomers. Kaya nga sabi dito, sa Big Bang Theory, this is how astronomers explain the way the universe began. So siya 'yung pinaka, um, pinaka-pinaniniwalaan ng scientist. Kasi nga, meron siyang, um, meron siyang proof like eto, 'yung cosmic microwave background. Yes. So yon, dito na nag-end 'yung discussion. Mabilis lang siya, or masyado lang nalaga ako mabilis. Meron tayong, um, meron tayong quiz na ipa-publish later, ah, 6:00 PM. Madali lang naman 'yung quiz. Don't worry, hindi ko naman humuhugahan 'yung mga, ano, 'yung mga scores niyo. Tikala lang natin kung meron kayo natutunan dito sa ngayong lesson. Wait. Ipopost ko na dito. Ah, 'yung deadline ng quiz, ano, until next week pa, until next week siya. No, ano, 'yung quiz, ano, ano lang, about astronomy lang, yun geometri, ba yon? Until next week 'yung deadline ng ah quiz, until the next study session para meron kayong time, anytime, para anytime pwede niyong matake. Wait, bahina natin 'yung ano. Nakaschedule siya na magpublish siya, magpublish siya ano, sa Google Classroom ng 6:00 PM. Hindi ko expect na, mabilis lang pala ng lesson.
Okay lang, ano, sini, hindi man, huwag napalitan.
Ah, huwag napalitan, okay. So 'yung ano, makikita niyo 'yung materials na ginamit ko sa Google Classroom by 6:00 PM. Nakaschedule na yon, mapapublish siya by 6:00 PM. Is there any questions pa ba? May question pa ba kayo? Madali lang naman 'yung quiz, ah, up to, ano lang, eight, fifteen items. May questions pa ba kayo?
If walang questions, type one.
Kayo, if walang question, type one. One kasi. Yan, very good.
Yan. So end mo na ano lecture.
Thank you so much, thank you so much sa pakikinig. So see you on Friday, which, which is ang tuturo ko ay calculus naman. Thank you everyone, have a good day.
Ayon, so end of session na guys. So see you tomorrow for our next subjects, which we'll be, we'll be having three subjects tomorrow. Um, Earth science from 2 to 4, arithmetic 4 to 6, ako yon, and then general information from 6 to 8:00 PM. So mahaba-habang ah discussion. And thank you for supporting our day one of the study sessions. Thank you so much. This will be uploaded, so, and kindly check your Google Classrooms para updated kayo sa mga announcements. Thank you, we will be ending the live.